Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, citizens to be heard. Got one citizen, anybody that would have liked to address the board, we've got cards over there that you can fill out, but it's Rick Francic, 3803 Cogly Road, Kenokee. I can't quite read your handwriting. Oh, Commissioner something. Your handwriting's a little... You want to go up there and address us?
Good evening, Board members. Thanks for having me speak a little bit. And I'm Rick Francic, trustee for Kenokee Township. And I'd just like to say that you guys are doing a good job for the county as we speak right now, but I'm looking at the future, which you guys are as well. I myself feel that Mr. McConnell, Greg McConnell that is, is a qualified guy. I know him personally. And you know, when you guys start doing your reviews and things of that nature, you know, I feel that the participation of our people is very valid here, and I hope that you guys take all that under consideration. And again, I thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizens wishing to address the board at this time? We're going to do a couple of things here. We're going to do a little introduction, just niche commissioner here, maybe take about a minute, just tell you guys about us. I'm going to start off, and then I'm going to go down to Carl. I'm Jeff Bohm. I'm from, I live in East China. I'm from St. Clair. I graduated in St. Clair in 1986. Actually, went to Central Michigan on a baseball scholarship. And phys ed major, health, I thought I was going to be a gym teacher when I got out, but I got into the fitness business. I've been in the fitness industry for 21 years. I currently own Viking Fitness Center. We've got a location in Marine City, Marysville Port Huron. Been on the board for 10 years now. Been the board chairman for four years. And I appreciate all the candidates coming out today to apply for this. Public service really has its moments, especially when you get that chance. I live right next door to my in-laws. I always love telling the story because when somebody talks bad about me in the paper, my mother-in-law's got the newspaper, and she's always next door. "Did you see what they say about you?" I sleep pretty good at night. She doesn't when they write bad things about her son-in-law. So, I appreciate everybody coming out and being part of the process here. Oh, actually, I'm married. I've got two kids, Jessica, Christina, go to St. Clair schools. My daughter's ninth grade, she's 14, and my other daughter's 11-years-old. She's sixth grade sports, running them around every weekend after school, all the above. My wife Carrie is a counselor in the Utica School System. She's been there 22 years, so lifelong residence and love being in the area. And really, the time on the board's really been pretty gratifying to serve it, really has. So, I'm going to pop down to Carl and let Carl give his schmeele. And I am the youngest one on the board, by the way.
And we realize that. My name's Carl Tompkins. I'm a native of Port Huron. I grew up, went through the schools here. McKinley, Garfield, Northern. I was in the first class, I graduated from Northern High School. I went to Community College, went to University of Michigan, got my bachelor's degree, came back, worked for the city of Port Huron for six years. Got my master's degree in public administration and spent 33 years as a city manager across the state of Michigan. And well, totally, I spent eight years working for the city of Port Huron as an assistant and as a city manager. I'm just starting my second term on the County Board of Commissioners. I'm really happy that someone's going to be appointed. I'm so tired of all these rookie commissioner jokes. I'm no longer going to be the rookie when this, when this process is over. I'm married. My, my wife Denise is also from Port Huron. I have two grown children, and I'm really looking forward to hearing from our candidates tonight.
Howard Heidemann. I'm serving my seventh term on the Board of Commissioners, 13 years. Jeff is right behind me with 11 years on the Board of Commissioners. I'm married, 50-plus years. We won't go that much more. I'm called Dad on the board by Commissioner Riley. I'm hoping that we can appoint someone that will give me a more flattering name other than Dad, just because I apparently have the most gray hair or whatever. I'm a graduate of the University of Nebraska-Karney. I retired from the Port Huron Air School District in 99 and worked for the Boy Scouts of America as a district executive for three years. And in 2002, I was elected to the Board of Commissioners. I'm hoping that we can appoint a Democrat to the board, as I'm the only Democrat, so make sure you let me know your political affiliation. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. As, as, as they frequently point out, the vote, Howard, is six to one, so the optimism there may be winging. But at least someone who is, recognizes that, as Jeff pointed out, we've gone through some extremely difficult times over the last decade-plus with the economy, economic conditions in Michigan deteriorating. We've been able to maintain our fund balance. We've been able to improve our bond rating, which resulted in rebonding a number of our notes, which has saved the county a lot of money in terms of bond payments. So, that part is important because if you want to do things in the county, it takes money. And so, we've been trying to keep what we can in terms of economic development going. And that's, I think that's going to be a big item going forward.
Okay. David.
All right. Dave Rushing, graduated K-PAC, 1973. Just celebrated my 40th anniversary with my wife. Three kids, five grandkids. And want to make a little joke about Carl down there. You know, I'm a second seniority now, and I'm going to have to carry the pooper-scooper for the rookie. I did graduate from SC4. Also got a degree, or associate's degree, from Macomb Community College, so I have two associate's degrees. My three kids graduated from K-PAC, and so did my wife and myself. And township supervisor, I said, for six years. I was also by my peers from the 23 townships. I served as the MTA chapter president for five years for the townships. That's about it? Railroad. Oh, railroad. Did work on a railroad for 15 years. Oh, I can ramble now. Township supervisor in charge of all the maintenance from Port Huron to Detroit to Pontiac, all the way down to Toledo, so all the yards. I do have a license to run locomotives, so.
Mr. Greathop.
Inside joke with this railroad stuff. I'm Bill Greathop, District 7, which is Algonquin, Clay, Cotchville, Marine City, Chinatownship, that includes Harson's Island and all the flats and all the islands out that way, too. I am married. I have two grown children in the mid-40 range. I have one stepchild, the Commissioner Bohm over there, I take care of him, too. He's one of the guys I have to keep an eye on. I have six grandchildren. Graduated from Wayne State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice that I used when I was a police officer in Detroit for a number of years. And then I went back, got my master's in education, retired schoolteacher. Been on the board now for, just starting my fifth year, my third term. Carl is, or Howard is the most senior. Jeff is second. I'm third in line. Commissioner Rushing. And I saw him at the same time, but we checked the video. My hand went up first, and I said, "I do," just above, split second before he did.
He had a ruling by the clerk, and I'm third.
This is my time. He is just behind me seniority-wise, so. But as you can see, we get along. It's the one thing I could say about this board. We have a very cohesive board. I'm very pleased to be on it at the time I'm on. It's been difficult because we've done nothing but cut, 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 and we're starting to see maybe where we're getting near the bottom, and maybe we're going to start seeing a little bit of a rise, which will be a pleasure for us to be able to implement some programs that we would like to do, but it's tough. But it has brought us together as a group, and we work very, very well together, even though sometimes there's a six-to-one vote. So, that being said...
Mr. Kaufman, why don't you give him your schmeele?
Well, I'm not a county commissioner. I am the administrator and controller for the county. I work for the county commissioners. I carry out their directives, work with them to establish board policy as well as their goals, work very closely with Carrie Hepting, our finance director, in developing the budget. I am, was not born or raised in St. Clair County. I was born and raised down on the metro Detroit area in Warren, just a couple blocks north of the city of Detroit. I went to school at Macomb Community College, received a degree there. Then I enlisted in the Air Force and served there for a number of years. Bachelor and graduate degree from Northern Michigan University. Went back down to the area. Began my professional career working with the city of St. Clair, then was hired by St. Clair County in their planning department. Eventually became the planning director. And after my predecessor, Sean Groden, left the county, Commissioner Bohm and Commissioner Samasco strong-armed me into this position, and I've been here ever since.
Best choice we ever make. I tell you, if I ever don't do anything right again in politics, we hired Bill Kaufman. So, Jay?
Sure. My name is Jay DeBoer. I'm a St. Clair County clerk. I guess I'm going on four, five years as the county clerk. I previously was a township supervisor in Clay Township, resided in Clay Township my entire life. Attended, also attended St. Clair County Community College and Eastern Michigan University. Started studying management marketing. You know, I'm the one guy up here that doesn't have a vote, but I can kick and scream because the budget rolls down at me a lot of times, and I can throw some leverage at these guys. But, you know, I was kind of in the position of the individuals who might be applying for this. I was appointed to fill a vacant position when Marilyn Dunn retired. So, I understand what you're going through from the, from the, what are they looking for? What do they want? And what is it that I can do that will, that's going to make a difference? So, I've been in those positions before. I appreciate you stepping forward as well as an elected official. It's a big deal, and it's, service to your community is very, very important. And there is a good group of people on this board. They don't always agree. I don't always agree. The elected officials in the county don't always agree with the board, but in the end, it's very, very, very professional. And it's, it's not a personal, it's not a personal issue at all. And in the end, when there are disagreements, people shake hands and they walk away and say that's the way the political process works. So, thank you for, for entering into this arena.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to amend the agenda, if I may.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that item four, which says District One Commissioner Appointment, be changed to District One Determination of Finalists.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving on. We're going to go into District One candidate presentations. First person, what we're going to do, Greg McConnell couldn't be here. He's on vacation right now. We're going to do a call-in speakerphone interview with him. Then we're going to just draw names and call people up to go up to the podium, five to 10 minutes, however long you need. It's very casual. This isn't, you know, high-pressure or anything here, so. Yeah, you want to, to jump in a little bit?
If I may, I'll run through a couple really quick, just for clarity. The Board of Commissioners, as, as the county clerk, I'm the chief elections officer of St. Clair County. The Board of Commissioners, by statute, it's, it's very simple process. They have the right to make a motion, second a motion, and a majority vote puts a person into office. They don't have to go through the process of vetting people or interviewing people. However, they were very clear that they wanted this to be an open and a transparent process. They wanted to hand it to me as far as the applicants turning in their applications, set a timeframe for them to turn their applications in, give them to them for review, and have an open forum by which people can discuss their, their good points and what they believe needs to be accomplished. So, they've asked me to do that, to have a very clear piece of the process. What we're going to do this evening, if I may, Chairman Bohm, is each candidate will have five, we're going to run a clock of five minutes. We're not going to give you a cold, hard shut-off at five minutes. We're going to let you get through that five minutes, but at some point, we'll probably say, "Okay, you have to wrap it up." There won't be any questions asked of you. The candidates are just here to listen. So, what they're listening for is your best presentation of what you have to give to them. They will not ask you questions this evening. At the end of that presentation, the board is going to make a determination at that point of who they believe to be their finalists for, for the candidate, for the position. And then they will hold a meeting next Thursday at 6:00 PM in which those finalists will be invited back to actually go through an interview process. And then at that time, the Board of Commissioners will make a determination on who that individual will be that they're going to nominate for an appointment to fill the District One vacancy. Anything else that we need to share?
So, with that... I guess we're going to start out by...
We're going to dial up Greg McConnell.
Yeah, he's actually out of town. He's on his 30th wedding anniversary.
Yeah. He's down on Florida, outside Florida. He planned this the whole month for his 30th wedding anniversary. He's taking his wife.
Turn that down a little bit now. Just pull that thing up a little bit if you need to.
Hello?
Hi, Greg.
Yes.
Hi, this is Jay DeBoer, a St. Clair County clerk. We have you on speaker at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Hello.
We are going to give you a five-minute, five-minute or so, we won't cut you off right at five minutes, but we're going to give you about five minutes, Greg, to give a presentation to the Board of Commissioners and also as well, there's obviously the other candidates as well as citizens here observing and listening. So, with that, Greg, I will let you begin your presentation.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Is that good? Yeah, we are good, Greg.
Okay. Hello, my name is Greg McConnell. My wife Sue and I live in K-PAC with our son Jeff, attends college at St. Clair County Community College. We also have two daughters that are married and on their own. I moved to K-PAC was not a move of distance. I was born and raised in Yale where I graduated and moved on to Ferris State University where I received a bachelor's degree in business and marketing. For the past 29 years, I've owned and operated an insurance agency in K-PAC. My wife and I have also developed land and commercial properties in the city of Yale, Brockley Township, Village of K-PAC, Muzzy Township, Kenokee Township, and Berlin Township. And we've done this for the past 25 years, as well as a new venture of owning and operating in K-PAC auto sales for the past four years. While operating these businesses, I was a board member for K-PAC Schools for one term. I am a current director of K-PAC Downtown Development Authority and have been for 24 years since its beginning. I'm a member of the K-PAC Chamber of Commerce and work with the K-PAC U-Sports Committee. I'm currently the chairman of the board for CSP Bank. The bank is headquartered in K-PAC. We have seven branches, there are 80 employees, and we manage 235 million in assets. I feel that with my business background and my current board experience, it would help me with the learning process of becoming a successful county commissioner. I would love the challenge of working with the county as a whole to try and improve our future. I would come in with no preconceived notions, but feel we would need to work as a unified team to accomplish goals. I am at a good time in my career. There are no children at home, and my oldest daughter is now my office manager, which allows me to have a more flexible schedule. I feel that I could be a strong asset to the county, and I thank you for your consideration as I know this is not an easy task. I would love to represent the people in District One as county commissioner. And I thank you for allowing me to have a phone interview. We are out of town, celebrating our 30th wedding anniversary. So, I guess I am not thanking myself. My wife also wants to thank you.
How's your weather down there?
I could lie and say that it's overcast and raining, but that wouldn't be fair.
All right. Okay, Greg, just you were not on the phone when we did, doing a little outline of how this is going to be handled. There are, there are no questions of you this evening. The board is going to make a determination at the end of the meeting who the finalists are. That will be announced this evening, and then you will be notified either way of the circumstances.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, Greg, thank you.
Bye.
Next up, Beverly Wheelahan.
My name is Beverly Wheelahan. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm not working. Usually I can speak loud enough, and my children will attest to that for you, that normally a microphone is just not necessary. So, is it working now? We're good? Okay. So, thank you for this opportunity to let me introduce myself to you and to the public people here. I have not resided in K-PAC very long, about a year now, but I have been a part of the community for about 14 by extension. I met my husband in 2001 in the city. St. Clair Shores was where I grew up. We lived in Grosse Pointe Woods for about eight years. But I fell in love with my husband as well as the community after I met him, and we made a conscious decision to move back to K-PAC to raise our two children in this community. Both of them attend elementary school at K-PAC, and I'm proud to say they're doing well, and they love it there, and they're excelling. We live a half a mile down the road from my mother-in-law, Catherine Wheelahan, who lives in the house that she was born in and where my husband grew up in. Once we moved to the county, I became involved with the P group at the elementary school. I became the coach of the robotics team and coached my son and the robotics team. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce in K-PAC. I also have donated my time to the K-PAC Friends of the Library in assisting them in becoming a 501(c)(3). I am a private practice in the county, and I specialize in student loan law, states and trusts, probate, and just about a little of everything along the way. After graduating from the University of Detroit, Mercy School of Law, and prior to opening my own law practice, I was general counsel of a multimillion-dollar IT staffing and professional services corporation for about six years. I feel that I can bring diversity to the board. I am somewhat of an outsider in that respect, but I come here to the community. And with my legal profession, I've been in support staff positions as well as leadership positions, so I can see both sides of an issue. My background gives me an experience to have perspective, to hear and consider different views, and resolve conflicts that may be complex at times, which is exactly what the board has to do. Not everyone's going to be liked about their decisions, and that's a difficult position to be put in, but one that I am consistently put in, not only in my private practice, but also as general counsel, leading a corporate legal department for a corporation. Given my experiences, I do have that ability to digest complex, sometimes very complex problems, and come up with multiple solutions to those and resolve the conflict. I like this opportunity so that I can assist, assist the current board in continuing the good work that they've done, especially during, as we all are aware, the economic downturn, not just in the nation, but in Michigan, which I feel was hit pretty hard considering the recession. And I would just add briefly that I come in contact with a lot of residents, and they're still feeling this economic downturn, and they may feel it for some time to come. I feel we can be fiscally conservative as well as promoting the county. We should focus on creating jobs and continuing our practice of encouraging new business to come to the county. I further feel it is paramount in encouraging our younger generation to stay here, to grow here, to raise families here, and open businesses here. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
I want to thank you also for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and consider all these folks, and thanks for kind of lightening the mood up with your introductions. That was, that was good. I think I know all of you at least a little bit, but I want to tell you a little more about my background. I live in Yale in a house that my parents, my grandparents bought in 1911. My grandfather opened a jewelry store there in 1899. And my grandmother came from K-PAC. Her grandparents built a log cabin by the Bell River in the 1840s. And later, they built a hotel that was a stagecoach stop along K-PAC Road. And their, their name was Locke. Their surname was Locke. And still, the bridge on K-PAC Road over the Bell River is still called Locke Bridge. My grandmother's grandfather was a Berlin Township supervisor at that time, and the old hotel was used as a township hall. My parents were teachers in Yale. My mother was a treasurer for the city of Yale for a while. And I graduated from Yale. Usually, I pause there and then say Yale High School, that is, but this crowd knows Yale too well. So, I was an Eagle Scout in Yale. Still am an Eagle Scout, Howard would remind me. I played with, as a playmate in kindergarten with Carl's brother when, when the Tompkins lived in Yale for a while, so it seems like there's a lot of Yale connections here. But I'm now an assistant scoutmaster for my son's troop down in Algonquin, Troop 223. I graduated from Albion College, and I was mayor of Yale for three years. I tell you all this and going way back just to show you that I have really deep roots in the county, and I care very much about this district. I have deep roots in this district, and I care a lot about it and, and the county as a whole. I got to know it a lot better when I was elected Drain Commissioner. In 1996, started serving in 1997, and served three terms, 12 years. And from that office, I worked with a lot of the officials around the county and in that district. And of course, with a lot of the different county officials, so I got to know the county system quite well. And I've served on many boards and many citizens groups. As I put in my resume, I'm still a member of the Bi-National Public Advisory Council for the St. Clair River. Worked with a lot of citizens groups. And I think all these years of experience as a public official, working, working with the public, handling the pressure of public office, which is not for everyone, I've had a lot of experience at that. Before I was elected Drain Commissioner, after Tom Donahue retired, the first appointee in the Drain Commissioners office only lasted about four months and resigned because of the difficulty of the office. So, I know what it's like to be a political official, have the pressures, and work with everybody in the community. And I understand that politics is about compromising with other people and finding solutions to problems through give and take. Not everyone is always happy with the decisions, as Ms. Wheelahan pointed out, but hopefully it's, the best compromise can be found by the give and take of politics. I think that's something important to understand. I want to commend this board for the way you've been able to work together and not get gridlocked like Congress and to some extent, the state legislature. You've really worked together and got things accomplished. And I realize that I've run as a Democrat in the past, so Commissioner Samasco was elected as a Republican, but in my three Drain Commissioner elections, I usually carried a majority of this district. People out there are pretty independent, and I think if I were to run again, I might get elected. get elected. Who knows? But I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak to everybody and just to prove that I'm not verbose and wouldn't drag out board meetings with long-winded speeches. I'm going to end this right now. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
John French.
Let me begin with thanking you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. Hello, my name is John French, and I live in Greenwood Township. I graduated from Yale High School, as did my mother, my grandmother. My family has lived in St. Clair County for over 100 years. I also am the Republican delegate for Greenwood Township. I'm the son of a minister and retired schoolteacher. I have been married 25 years to my wife, Dina. Dina is a counselor at Port Huron Northern and has worked in the district for over 20 years. Dina is also a board member on the Yale School Board. She has served in that capacity for 10 years. I've had more fights with my wife over that than anything else. I earned my bachelor's degree from Bethel College in Mishawaka, Indiana. I majored in business administration and minored in economics. After graduation, I worked as an insurance agent and opened a small office in Yale, offering financial planning. Later, I went back to school, this time earning a teaching degree from the University of Michigan-Flint. I have also earned my master's degree from Saginaw Valley in the area of special education. My first year of teaching was in the Flint Public School System in an inner-city school. It was quite possibly the hardest year of my life. Looking back, though, it proved to be an invaluable experience. This exposure to a vastly different social-economic environment tested my metal. For one year, I worked on the proverbial other side of the tracks. It taught me a lot about myself and how to work outside of my comfort zone. The following year, I was offered a job at Yale High School, my alma mater. At Yale, I have primarily taught mathematics. I have also taught government and economics. I am currently in my 18th year of teaching at Yale High School. In that time, I have served as a head cross-country coach, assistant track coach, mentor, and class advisor. I'm the father of five children, I got you all beat there, four boys and one girl, ranging in ages from 10 to 20, and a 13-year-old girl. I am a member of Trinity Missionary Church in Yale. You may know one of our sister churches, Colonial Woods in Port Huron or Crossroads Community in East China. I have a good rapport with a faith-based community. I enjoy hunting, fishing, carpentry, gardening. I hold a CPL or CCW license and host several classes a year. I have helped hundreds of men and women acquire their CPL certificates. I come to you today without any hidden agendas or prejudice, harbor no ill will towards any member or any district. I understand that my role as a commissioner is to represent the needs of my district, and I would do so to the best of my ability, but I also realize I cannot be deaf or blind to the needs of surrounding districts. For this body to function properly, there needs to be a genuine spirit of cooperation, as Mr. Fuller said, of give and take. As a member, I pledge my willingness to consider all issues seriously and to compromise as needed when appropriate. As, I will make every effort to help my district go, but similarly, I want to see all districts prosper. No district should prosper at the expense of another. I will look for every opportunity to be cooperative in all matters. I'm a naturally curious person. When I do not understand something, I will ask questions, and I'm not afraid to admit when I do not know something. I have learned to be somewhat distrusting of anyone who says they know everything. I am hopeful that this board is also curious enough to ask questions and to learn from each other. In order to provide wise leadership, I must be willing to seek out good counsel. To step into this job and to think that you know what's going on without good counsel would be very unwise. It is my hope this body will assist the next commissioner with good counsel as needed. There was a certain level of fear and trepidation when I was first approached to run for this job. I still haven't quite figured out if Steve Samasco is or isn't my friend in that capacity. I did not seek this position on my own accord. If it were not for several respected friends, as Steve and others encouraged me to run, I would not be standing here today. Politics never entered my radar until three weeks ago, aside from a delegate for Greenwood. More than once, I have awoken to the unsettling prospect of what will I do if I am selected? It is a sobering thought. Anyone in my place who has not felt a similar twinge of hesitation may not fully understand the undertaking before them. I see it for what it is, a tough job, and not for the faint of heart. My associate, Steve Samasco assures me that you are a good group to work with. He says that we will share much common ground. I've decided to take him at his word. That is not to say that I'm making this decision lightly. I'm not. I feel I'm ready for this new challenge. I'm willing to serve. As a teacher, I hope there's not a limit to how many teachers can be on this board, because you might have surpassed that. I am familiar with working with the public. I have faced more than my fair share of unhappy students, parents, and administrators. I have learned how to de-escalate volatile situations. I am continually working at improving my conflict resolution skills. In many cases over time, I have won over many of my adversaries. In my profession, you need to be calm, respectful, and always tactful. As a commissioner, I too may have my distractors and antagonists. At times, my judgments may be challenged, and my efforts not appreciated or understood. I enter into this adventure, adventure, with my eyes wide open and an eagerness and willingness to serve. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Michael McGriff.
Hello, my name is Mike McGriff. I appreciate this opportunity to present myself. I've been living in Clyde Township for over 25 years and been married to my wife, be 38 years in this coming June. So I got a pretty good perspective of you other gentlemen who's had a long marriage, and it gives me also a perspective of the female aspect of everything, so that I've got a broad concept of what happens and what goes on. I spent six years in the Navy. I was in submarine service during Vietnam, and I graduated from St. Clair Community College and then went into several different things. I've been into construction, roofing, and also heating and cooling. I've also had a background in owning my own business, and I am very versed in all aspects of government. I've been associated in Clyde Township. I'm presently on the Planning Commission as a chair. It gives me a lot of insight to what planning is and how you need to look forward, also on the Rec Committee, and I've also been on the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals. Gives me a real good aspect of how everything works. I know it's going to take a lot to come up to speed, but I also have a good understanding and have learned very quickly, understand how to utilize the concepts that you guys work with, and I really feel one of my strongest is to be able to work with people. I was a PTA chairman, was also on Planning Commission Chairman, I was Chair of the Church Council, so I've had plenty of experience with Robert Rules of Order, how that works, and how you work together with people. Resolution conflict is one of my strong points, being able to assess different ways of doing things and then compromising to find the best results for people. I feel very confident in working with this board. I've been to different meetings. I know how everybody operates together, and that's something that really makes a big difference in seeing a board that's coherent and can operate with each other. And I do have a pretty thick skin, so I don't really mind being joked about being the new person on the board. I will gladly take that position. It doesn't bother me at all. I can handle that. And I do feel that I have, I know you've got a lot of strong candidates here, and I see everybody is really well-qualified, but I do feel if you select me, I will be very useful and have very good information for you and be able to work with you and then compromise and get the results. And no, I'm not a Democrat, but I am a non-party affiliation. I do not subscribe to either party, which kind of is, like you said, a lot of the area out there is independent, and that's where I've kept myself as an independent. And I also have lived in rural communities for most of my life, so I understand the aspects of the rural community and how that can relate to the rest of the county, and I feel very confident that I'd be able to work well with everybody on the board. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Denise McCarron. Is that how you pronounce that, McCarron, McKernan?
But knowing what a walk it was going to be from the back, I would have just sat a little closer. My name is Denise McKernan. I know everyone here has probably had a chance to sort of see the newspaper article and the introduction for the candidates tonight, but I'll just go ahead and sort of review some of the information about me. I moved to Kenoke Township in 2002 with my family. My mother, father, and my sister, myself. Sorry, I'm getting over flu. For the last 13 years or so, we've lived in Kenoke Township. During that time, I have earned myself four university degrees. I have two bachelor's degrees from St. Vincent College in Latreau, Pennsylvania. One is history and the other anthropology. I also have a master's degree in library and information science from the University of Pittsburgh. I also have a University of Nebraska-Kearney degree for American history. For the last decade or so, my professional career has included work with K through 12 schools, community college, universities, libraries, and museums, so I'm a little used to working with the public. My work experience has included working with Baker College, St. Clair County Community College. Oh, goodness. I'm sorry. St. Clair County Community College and at Davenport University, I was the library director at both their Flint campus and their Caro campus. For those of you who aren't familiar with where Caro is, it's up in Tuscola County. I've also worked in another area of the state as a library director. I am familiar with working with boards. I've worked with successful boards, and I've worked with failed boards. Something that I've had a chance to experience firsthand is how important it is to have that strong communication with the public. The experience that I have is something that I want to bring here to St. Clair County. I've always maintained my residence here in St. Clair County in Kenoke Township because I love it. It's not just a place I'm here for convenience, but it's also where I want to be, it's where I want to raise my family, where I want to continue my career. Everyone here has, seems to have a very deep background working or living and working in the community, but something that I'm trying to present here is that I'm bringing a new perspective. What I offer this community, what I'm offering the Board of Commissions is, I've worked with poor communities in Caro, in Flint. I will say there's a lot in common with poor rural populations and poor city populations, but I've also worked extensively with people here in St. Clair County. If there is one thing that you can get, working with student populations, especially people who are non-traditional students, mix in with traditional students, is how bad this economy has really hit Michigan, and that's what I'm offering to bring to the board. I have worked with boards. I've answered two boards. I am familiar with the Robert Rules. I am familiar with the Open Meeting Act, transparency and so forth. It's something that feels perfectly natural to me. I have also stood up in situations where transparency isn't always there, and occasionally board members might want to operate not in the best interests of the community. I've always had that strong relationship with the community that I'm serving. So that's pretty much what I want to offer the board. I have experience and background interacting with the community, I'm familiar with the challenges that, I'm a member of the population that Michigan right now is trying so hard to maintain, trying to keep here, and I was hoping that maybe a new voice could be heard in St. Clair County, something that I could offer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Schultz.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me come up here and speak and address the board. I'm Randy Schultz. I'm 58 years old. I've been married for 35 years. I got two kids. One just started Ford Motor Company, and the other one's a machine repairman at the Keon Plant in K-PAC. I was Muzzy Township Supervisor for 16 years. I was also appointed by the Board of Commissioners to the Appeals Board for the county. I was on the ZBA. I've been on the Board of, the Council on Aging. I'm helping getting Dr. Conrad and Alberta, Doctor and Alberta Conrad Community Center going in the Village of K-PAC. Chamber of Commerce member. I've been at Schultz Firearms for 25 years, but I've actually just opened up a store in K-PAC now. And so I did that. Like I said, I retired after, from Ford Motor Company, Romeo Engine Plant, then the tractor plant before that. After 37 and a half years, I've never missed a day. I've, like I said, I've been, last, I was appointed by Ford Motor Company when I retired, the ERC, which is a poly resource coordinator, which I dealt with all the training and the needs and the colleges and the, because the Fords will pay for any schooling that workers need. And I dealt with all the schools and everything. And like I said, I've been, you know, lived in this township and ever since. Well, I lived in K-PAC first, and we went to Emmett, then it changed to Muzzy, so, and it was all in the same house. So, like I said, I'm going to keep this short. So like I said, I want to wish everybody else here good luck, and like I said, I'm willing to work with anybody. I'm got, if I get it, I'll come with an open mind. I won't come with no, okay, this is my agenda, I got to listen to you guys, you guys have been here the longest. Okay, thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Scott Harris.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here today. I think it's an honor and a privilege. And listening to everybody speaking, it's really interesting to see that the district has this many quality people to choose from, so you've got a big task at hand, and there's good quality people here, so I feel whoever you pick, it's going to be a good choice. So, thank you. I've been married with my wife Jackie for 26 years now. We have three children, and 19 years ago, we were in Mount Clemens, and I decided to want to make a change, and I wanted to move out to an area where people had the same type of mindset and morals and values. And we wanted to live in a country, and again, 19 years ago, we were researching all that, looked at the school district, looking to the county, and I found that the Jettow area where we ended up building our house really kind of was what we were looking for, the people, the community, the schools. It was really a good fit for us. So for the past 19 years, we built a house, and we raised our children there. Our children went to elementary at St. Edwards on the Lake. They graduate high school from Yale High School. I'm blessed to have all three of them, two graduated college, one's a senior at Grand Valley, so we've been extraordinarily blessed with that. My wife decided about 12 years ago to become a teacher, and she's currently a teacher at Yale High, Yale Schools, not High School, she's elementary, lower L. And she's been a teacher there for nine years. You know, now, being here for 19 years, there's a lot of people have been here generations, but being part of the community with all the kids you grew up with, the schools, you learn the people, you get to know them, so I feel I've got a good handle on the community that, you know, encompasses the district, and it really, just being involved with all that is a big plus. When you're talking experience with boards and bodies such as this, I really don't have a whole bunch of experience when it comes to that. I, when Mount Clemens, I was on the traffic board for one term. I tried to participate in schools. I was on the parent advisory board at St. Edwards on the Lake. I also was an officer for the Knights of Columbus and Ushers Group at Sacred Heart Church in Yale, and we've been a member there since we arrived in Jettow. We kind of split between St. Ed's and Sacred Heart, both great places. Educationally, I went to school for two years, never graduated. I feel I have a PhD in hard knocks and common sense, so. I also was an officer for the Knights of Columbus and Ushers Group at Sacred Heart Church in Yale and we've been a member there since we arrived in Jettow. We kind of split between St. Ed's and Sacred Heart, both great places. Educationally, I went to school for two years, never graduated. I feel I have a PhD in hard knocks and common sense, so it's paid off. That's really the most, you know, over the 27 years working and so forth, I've had to be challenged with people who have masters and undergraduate degrees and I've succeeded. But then again, that really, it really just from fighting and scrapping and doing well. Business-wise, a couple of years after college, I ended up working for a commercial construction company. I worked for that company for 23 years, started out as a project manager and I built my way through that into Director of Construction, Product Development, and construction projects for the state of Michigan, Northwest Ohio, and Indiana. We had an operating plan just over $10 million, so I've got a pretty good experience and decent-sized operating plans and how to handle budgets and manage money and people and personnel. Three and a half years ago, I was recruited by Stanley Access Technology and, which is part of the Stanley Black and Decker Company based up in Connecticut. I currently work out of my house and manage a budget of just shy of $19 million. So what that means, I think, for this conversation is that I have the ability to understand how to view budgets, large budgets, at a higher level and not get involved too deeply with nuances of the day-to-day operations of how those budgets are being spent. It's more of an oversight. And I think that experience really would play a positive role here if you were to choose me to be a board member. Fiscally, I'm a fiscally conservative person. I think, you know, we have to be stewards of our finances. We have to be stewards of our community. We have to really, you know, do the right thing for the people that are paying the taxes and make sure that the money that is being allocated towards, you know, whatever task is going to be spent wisely. So what I bring to the table is my experience of business, oversight of large operating plans, and, you know, just my common core, you know, doing the right thing. So that being said, thank you very much. I appreciate it and look forward to your decision. It'd be interesting, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Jim Marsh. I'm a resident or have been a resident of Clyde Township for 42 years. Happily married to my lovely wife Catherine, who has accompanied me this evening. Three grown children, three grandchildren that are just about grown. Retired from the insurance business and a graduate of Western Michigan University. I'm pretty conservative in my beliefs, so I can't help Commissioner Hydeman out much, but I can give you a run for your money in the gray hair department. The why I'm here tonight is I think this is a great opportunity to give back to the I have been interested in community welfare all my life. I've been driven to community service really for two reasons. One of the drivers is the abilities and the opportunities to make a difference in my community. The other is to better the community for the residents of the community. My history of community service goes all the way back to coaching Little League Baseball in Grand Rapids before my children were able to play baseball. Coming back home to Port Huron, getting involved in the Little League and Indian Princesses for the daughters. Then the Port Huron J.C.'s, which I'm not sure that's a plus or a minus if you know some of the history of the Port Huron J.C.'s. I've served on many boards, both local, national, Users Group Board for a major software vendor involved in the insurance industry. But I think the most notable of my board participation would be that of Port Huron Hospital. I started in the 70s and early 80s volunteering at the hospital for various committees, moving on to the hospital main board and was fortunate enough to become Chairman of that board. Also became a member and then Chairman of Blue Water Health Services Board, which is a parent holding company for the entire hospital system. As a part of those boards, I will share a quick experience with you that I think is very important and demonstrates to everyone my involvement and commitment to the community. In the mid 1990s, I was chosen as one of three persons along with our CEO and Chairman of the Board to negotiate a joint operating agreement with two other major hospital systems. It was quite an important task. I felt very honored to be a part of it. It was a long, arduous task that took place over several months. We had a facilitator who at that time was a partner in Price Waterhouse. And the point of this story is this. Our CEO and our Chairman of the Board and myself would sit in a room by ourselves talking strategy, where are we going with this? And our CEO said one evening, what's best for the community? We need to set aside some of our personal biases, thoughts, things for Port Huron Hospital and what's best for the community? And those words have really served me since then because anytime you're with a group of people, whether it's a business situation or a community situation, if you come back to the words, what's best for the community, you can never be too far off-center. I think my experiences on boards, my business experiences in the insurance industry really have put me in a position to add value to your board. I've got experience in strategic planning and budgeting from organizations as small as $5 million in revenue, which was my office here in town, to two other offices in the state of Michigan, Grand Rapids and Lansing, that I was responsible for, that brought that total to about $20 million. And then strategic planning and budgeting for the hospital is a $100 million-plus situation. So if you look and need someone involved in strategic planning, community commitment, I think I have those things to offer. To quickly characterize the type of board member I am, I'm energetic, enthusiastic, and I'm dedicated, as well as something that I personally feel you need to bring to every job, whether it's business or personal community involvement, and that's passion. I'm passionate about what I do. When I get involved in something, I'm in all the way 100%. One thing I bring, or what I bring as a board person though, is I listen, I learn, I participate. I don't talk in board meetings just to hear the sound of my voice. My time and everyone else's time is much more valuable than that. When I get a board packet, I read the packet, I study the packet, I do whatever research I need to do, and I come to the meeting prepared, all the time, every time. And with that, I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak before you and appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. DeBoer and I guess talk a little bit about process.
Sure. What we're going to do now is each one of the commissioners has before them a, for the lack of a better term, I guess, a ballot, if you will, with the nine individuals who have put their hat in the ring for this position. What I'm going to ask them to do is to mark their ballot in a fashion, their selection of their three candidates that they would believe to be the candidates that they would like to see as a finalist for further interview. What we're going to do at that time is we will collect those, we will tally those, and we'll make a determination at that point as to the number of finalists that they will indeed interview. So at this time, I'll give it to you guys to do that process and I'll collect them from
Just for the people in the audience, Tom Riley will be back for the meeting next week. He's coming back on Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken.
Can you say something I could open right this hour?
No.
I was wondering where that was at, Howard.
You know, this is an interesting situation. We had to go through this probably five years ago. Howard and I were on the board when Denny Kearns actually passed away and we had to go through the appointment process at that time and it was really no how-to manual, how you do this. And, you know, we're trying, we've talked about this, Jay and I a lot, how do we try to be, you know, open the process, do, you know, the best that we can. I think I got to give Jay a lot of credit and actually Carl's going to help us a little bit with the other. Carl has a lot of experience in, you know, the interviews and candidate searches, so on and so forth. So being the board chairman, I'm fortunate that I have the ability to have guys like that on the board that I'm able to turn to and say, Carl, I need you to work on this.
If I could say something at this point, one of the assignments that Jeff has given me is to prepare the questions for the interviews. And one of the things that I did as a consultant is made sure that in every interview, there was certain number of questions that every candidate is asked, so that we have certain areas that we can all benchmark and every candidate is asked, so we don't get to the end of the process and we start speculating how people might have answered the same set of questions. But that will not limit the commissioners from asking their own follow-up questions or additional questions, but I think it's going to be important for us to have a core group of questions, maybe six, that get asked of every candidate. So in the interim, if you have questions that you would like to be considered for the foundation questions, if you would send those to me, I'd certainly consider them.
Okay. And one of the other things that happened last time, and Howard will remember this, we said we were going to take, and there again, we had 17 people apply. When we went through it before, we said we were going to take the top five candidates. One, two, three, and four all were, you know, scored high. Five, six, seven, and eight were all tied. So collectively, at that time, we determined to go with the top four candidates. I don't know how the scoring's going to go, but I think our intent was to narrow it down to three and Jay, I'm going to let you do the thing.
So I took the tally and this is in no particular order, but these are the top three. James Marsh, Scott Harris, and Greg McConnell. So those three individuals would be invited and let me know if I'm speaking how I shouldn't, but those three individuals would be invited back for a little further in-depth interview with the Board of Commissioners next Thursday evening at 6:00 PM here. That'll be, I think, as Commissioner Tomin had touched, I wasn't really paying attention, but that'll be a little more in-depth next week, those three individuals, so.
Exactly. So Jay, would you like us to make a motion?
It would be proper to make a motion to select those three candidates as your finalist. A motion and support and vote on that.
Then I would make a motion that the three candidates, make sure I've got this right, James Marsh, Greg McConnell, and Scott Harris be, move on in the process for interviews.
Finalists for interviews.
For our next.
Second motion.
Discussion. On favor.
Aye.
Those moving to adjournment.
Motion. Support.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.